The Commissioners Court of Brazos County will meet in regular session on May the 7th, 2024, 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' courtroom in the Brazos County Administration Building, 207 Tex- Avenue, Suite 106. First item on the agenda is the invocation pledge of allegiance to the US and Texas flag. Commissioner Watts will lead us.
Heavenly Father, accept our thanks for this day and all its blessings. We thank you for the much-needed rain, but also pray for those who are now having to deal with the devastation of the flooding. We thank you and pray for the first responders, we thank and pray for the first responders who also answer the call when there is such devastation. We also desire your glory and blessing in all that we do, direct our thoughts, words, decisions, and actions toward the right path, and help us stay on track. Let your will be done as we plan and make decisions. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is to call for citizens' input and our concerns, and there were none turned in. And we're going to go out of order this morning. We've got a number of law enforcement here that may want to get back on the street, so we're going to do the proclamation for law enforcement first, peace officers, and then they're all welcome to stay and throughout the meeting if they won't, but if they need to get back to work, they can. So let's take that action item first, that's number four. I'll need a motion and a second on that.
Motion to approve, item four?
Second. Motion made seconded. Law enforcement, Sheriff, come on up, and everybody here who's involved in law enforcement, come up. Is this on? Okay. Okay, now, can you hear? Okay. Whereas President John F. Kennedy has signed Public Law 87726, October 1st, 1962, designating May 15th as the Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week of which the date falls as Police Week. Whereas all law enforcement agencies in Brazos County play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of citizens of Brazos County, and whereas members of law enforcement recognize the duty to serve people of Brazos County by safeguarding the life and property, by protection against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception, the weak against oppression, and our intimidation. And whereas during National Police Week, and throughout the year, the county of Brazos recognizes and appreciates the critical contributions and sacrifices of the members of law enforcement at all levels. And whereas during National Police Week, the county of Brazos recognizes and appreciates the incredibly dangerous risks that these individuals face every day while serving their communities, it serves as a reminder of the sacrifices that they make to protect and serve others. And whereas Police Week recognizes and honors hometown heroes who have passed away in the line of duty and recognizes current peace officers in law enforcement. And now therefore, be it resolved, that the Commissioners' Court of Brazos County does hereby proclaim May 12 through 18, 2024 is National Police Week, and May 15, 2024 is Peace Officers' Memorial Day, where all citizens are encouraged to pay tribute to the many law enforcement employees working in Brazos County for vital public services that they provide. Proclaim this 7th day of May, 2024.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you all. Thank you for putting forth that proclamation, approving the proclamation today, in recognition and appreciation for the work that our peace officers do. Our community is blessed to have a law enforcement community that works well together to protect all the citizens of Brazos County, and day and night, they're there for us. And so, thank you for this recognition. And to the officers in the room, the deputies, the constables in the room, thank you for your service, thank you for keeping our community safe, thank you for making Brazos County a special place to live. Thank you, Judge.
Amen. Thank you, Sheriff. Yeah, come on up, friend. Yeah, yeah, come on up, pictures. Bless you guys. Thank you. You did all right?
Yeah, yeah. It might be bad, it's been in the truck all night.
Yeah. Y'all have a dangerous job, we certainly appreciate it. So we will, we need to, oh yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. So we need to move back up now to presentation and discussions. First is the Brazos County Tax Office Productivity and Future by Kristi Rowe, Tax Assessor/Collector. Kristi.
That's too complicated for me. Good morning.
Good morning.
How's everybody? I'm going to make a really quick PSA, just announcement, I have sent this to the news media. The tax office will not be able to view or process any type of property tax information tomorrow. We're having a server migration for our software, so we will be kind of dead in the water in that particular area, but we will still be able to handle all motor vehicle transactions. So, just so everyone knows, yeah, property tax come today, or wait till Thursday, please. I was visiting with the judge the other day, and was giving him some information, he said it was really good information, and he thought maybe everybody would like to know it, so I will try and make this fairly quick. The county tax office in Brazos County is a real hub of activity. We are busy all the time. We are handling multiple things. So, we wanted to just kind of give you a quick overview of basically a snapshot of a year in the tax office. The staff, we've got 36 staff members, we have several levels within that area. Most of these people are cross-trained. That means that they take care of whatever comes in the door. And we have two independent, separate types of transactions that we handle, we have two different areas that we cover. Obviously, we cover property tax, collection, and dispersal, but we also handle motor vehicle transactions of all types. And we do that basically as an agent of the Department of Motor Vehicles, and that is statutory. We handle vehicle registrations, motor vehicle titles, permits, placards, you name it, whatever they need for us to do, we do. In that process, we're also collecting sales tax on all motor vehicle transactions, and for that, we're dealing with the State Controller's Office. So we actually work with multiple state agencies, and we also collect property taxes for a total of 12 taxing jurisdictions. So we collect for the county, we also collect for 11 more taxing units, and disperse their money on a daily basis. Most of those fall within the boundaries of Brazos County. Bryan ISD runs up into Robertson County, and we currently still collect those as well. So we bill all of those. And so it's a very involved process. We ask an enormous amount of our staff members because we require that they be cross-trained in both fields. The tools that we have, we have multiple software platforms that we work on. Interestingly enough, the state has its own computer system, and they place that in our office, so most of my staff have two computers sitting under their desk at all times, and they toggle back and forth between the two to enable them to take care of the customers. The goal is for anyone who walks in the door, when they get called to a window, that clerk can take care of everything that they need. And the software that we use allows us to specify what each clerk can do and their training level, so they can only call customers that they actually can assist. But there are ample people there that can be called to the front to assist them in anything that they need. So that has been a goal of us. If anybody remembers the old tax office, you remember, if you had to register your car, you would go in one door and take care of business, then you have to go out on the street, and go down the street, and go in another door to pay your property taxes. So the goal when we built this building was to make sure that we could have a one-stop-shop for everyone. So what I was talking to the judge about was workload volume, and it's kind of hard for us to quantify everything. I haven't figured out how to do phone calls yet. We, the phones are constantly ringing in the tax office, and just so everyone knows, patience is appreciated, we don't have enough people to answer all the phone calls all at one time, but if people will leave a message, we call, we return those calls, and it is a rare bird that we don't return all of them that same day. So we do work very hard to do that, to assist people with whatever they need. There are five different areas of transactions that we have identified that we can actually quantify, and we have software in place that we can actually pull numbers from. And so, that's something that I wanted to basically report to you, can I give you a snapshot of how busy we are at the tax office? Just so you know, we all, it helps us to identify trends and different volumes. One of the things that we've noted was that with our growth, we are increasing vehicle registrations on an average of approximately 3,000 a year. And by the way, we do get business from the university as well, because it is legal for a full-time student to register their vehicle where they're going to school full-time. So, we handle quite a bit of the university students, and they're growing like crazy, and then anyone else that's within the boundaries of Brazos County. We are able to handle their motor vehicle transactions. Okay, so we just went a year back from when we started looking at this, we've been making this report to the budget folks for a little over a year now. So we started in April of '23 and went through March of '24, and we just quantified, in this particular case, the customers served. These are people that walk in the door and get a ticket, or come through the drive-through and get a ticket. And so, you'll notice there are some months that are a little bit busier than others, but we're fairly busy all the time, and our annual total during that timeframe was 131,896 customers. When I say customers, that's tickets pulled, and we also have people that will pull one type of ticket, but they're handling multiple transactions at the window when they get there. So, it just makes it a little bit, little bit interesting for your day. The next thing that we were looking at was motor vehicle registration renewals, permits, disabled parking, placards, anything motor vehicle that's not a title. And we do see some months that are busier than others, March and April, both tend to be a little bit busier. You'll notice we can, we can almost double what we do in other months. In this past year, in that particular area, we handled 77,876 transactions. Web agent, now that's something that I thought was going to just really take off, and it has plateaued shortly after we did it. We've been contracting with all HEB and Kroger locations for approximately six years now, seven years, and longer, I guess. That allows anybody that has that nice green and white form the state mails you when it's time to register your car, to walk into any HEB or Kroger when you're getting your milk and your bread and all that kind of stuff, and you can register your vehicle there, and they can issue you the sticker. And how that process works is, they're creating a file that gets sent to us, and they bring us those receipts and the money once a week, and we review each one of those, and then we submit them to the state. So we're actually completing the transactions, but they're going ahead and registering vehicles for you, just to make it convenient to the customer. And I really thought this was going to grow more than it has, but at the very least, it is allowing 18,390 people last year to not have to come and make that trek out to the tax office. I'm always amazed, nobody likes to come see us. I don't know why. We're nice. Also, dealing with motor vehicle transactions, we have title transactions. Now, title transactions involve individual transactions between, you know, I'm selling you my car, I'm buying a trailer from you, whatever. It also deals with all dealer transactions within the county. So all work done at dealerships comes to my office. Some of those are paper transactions, they currently come and drop off paperwork to us. They also, all of the franchise dealers are now submitting their documents electronically, which means we receive them electronically, we review them, each individual one, to verify that it's correct. If it's incorrect, we can kick it back to them, they can correct it and send it back to us. Once we get to the end of the work that we can review that day, we set that aside, we notify them, we draft their bank account for what it's going to cost, as soon as it hits my bank account, we complete those transactions and call them to come and pick up all the work for them. So this is something the state is going to, and we're seeing a major change in that this coming year. Not all dealers are on that, just the franchise right now, and a few of the used car dealers, but that allows us not to have to do all of that data entry. So the fewer people that are handling the data entry portion is really great, and it makes for fewer mistakes. So that's, that's something that we have really enjoyed. This past year, we handled 43,708 title transactions. Property tax payments, that's pretty straightforward, you'll notice that it drops off certain times of the year, but June, it's a little busy, November, December, January, it tends to be kind of a busy place. But that is a year-round process, people don't think about it that way, but we deal with people, and we're helping them with, where do I find my homestead, what do I need to do? And we try to help them take care of that. So we handled 102,510 payments during that timeframe. Training is a big part of the tax office, we do have formal training, and when I say there are formal training and certifications, those are tested courses that are available, and additional training on top of that, we have some that are trained, cross-trained, certified in more than one agency. Mine is a dual certification, plus an additional one. The chief deputy holds the same level of certification that I do in both fields, plus advanced courses, except as a deputy level. Property tax supervisor actually is certified in both property tax and motor vehicle, and she's working towards that advanced designation. Motor vehicle supervisor has obtained her certification, and I have additional staff members that are on track. It takes a little extra money to do that, but it is really, really beneficial to the public to have those staff members really be trained and get some in-depth training in these fields. It's some, one thing to take your check and give you a receipt for your property tax payment, it's another one to understand what all it takes. And we appreciate the fact that we've touched people's lives in this area, well, in both areas. They, this protects their home, this protects their businesses, and it provides the services that they expect from their local jurisdictions. And we also make sure that they've got wheels to go take the kids to school. So, we're a major part of people's lives, and we appreciate that. Last thing I wanted to mention was, looking ahead, there are several changes coming over the next year. We're of course getting ready for property tax season right now, we're already, already working on gathering data to prepare for rate calculations, and the truth and taxation process, and the website. Our statutory responsibilities in motor vehicle are going to change this coming year. I had mentioned the electronic submission, the state is going to require all dealerships to go online and submit their paperwork electronically, and so we are working with those dealerships and helping them to get that information and get prepared to do that. A major modification is going to be, and we're working on this one, that paper tags are going to go away. And by that, I mean that paper tag that they put on your car when you buy a car, or a paper tag when you come in to get a temporary tag, they want to go to metal plates. And this is going to modify the way that we handle things in the office, because we're going to have to provide that plate inventory to those dealerships, to all dealerships, because they're all going to be putting a metal plate on. The actual registration will come when they submit the paperwork to us, and we complete everything, we'll provide the registration stickers, but the plates themselves are going to have to be inventoried and provided, and so we're not too sure how that's going to work yet.
But it will be a, it will, it will still be a temporary.
It will still be a temporary. That will go to law enforcement, is my understanding, right now. That's what they're thinking, is they will report that, and it will go to law enforcement, so law enforcement can pull that plate and see that that is a temporary for a vehicle that has just been purchased.
Okay, so, there's got to be a considerable expense in addition to what we're doing now with paper plates, was there some concern, is the legislation oriented towards fraud that's going on?
There, there has been quite a bit of graft and corruption in the paper, paper tag industry, and the way people have handled them. It's, it's a problem.
So we got, so as usual, we have to pay a little extra money in the state of Texas because people are not following the rules?
That's possible, yeah. I'm not going to say that's exactly it, but yes.
I will.
We'll be working.
So when you're saying you'll have to inventory that, that means you'll also have to store or house those temporary metal tags?
They're actually the permanent metal plates that we currently issue, and so those are going to be going out to dealerships, and the dealers will be putting those on, sending that information back to us with the title paperwork, and we will vet that, register it, and then provide the registration, actual registration. But it will be a, a metal plate that goes, and it will be the plate that you have. That's the way we understand it.
So it's the plate that you actually keep?
No, it is the plate you actually keep, yeah. No, it's the plate you actually keep. The concern we have is that we're going to have to order, identify, audit, and, and make sure that we're monitoring that. And the state's working on that as well, we'll be working with them this next month at the conference, I'm sure there'll be a lot of discussion about that.
This suspiciously sounds like a non-funded mandate.
I did not say that.
I did.
Okay.
So if it's a, if it's a transaction between individuals, you know, I'm buying Cheryl's car. Does, should, do we, I guess, get that plate, that permanent plate there at the transaction at the tax office, or how does that work?
Well, currently, the plate is there on the vehicle already because Cheryl's been using it, and you can allow that to transfer over, or she can pull that plate off. Say she sells you the car and gives you the paperwork, she wants you to do that transaction, so she pulls the plate off to make it more, give you more impetus to get to the tax office and take care of business. So you're not running through toll booths with her number.
Parking on campus.
And we see a tremendous amount of that going on, we have people coming in all the time complaining about that.
Yeah.
But yeah, it, it's a change, this was a determination by the legislature, and the state is working on all the ins and outs and how it's going to work, and we're trying to jump in and work with them to make sure, when it gets to us, it's where the rubber meets the road.
Sure.
And we try to make sure it's as smooth as possible. So that's a big change that we see coming. This coming year, around mid-year, is when it is supposed to happen. I'm not sure, we'll see. But yeah, we're working on that, and also, just so everyone knows, yes, vehicle inspections are going away, but not yet. Continue to please go and get your vehicle inspected when you need to register your vehicle, we will notify you. That is supposed to cease sometime the first part of this next year. So, we're working on that, any fees that continue to be collected, and things of that nature, but yeah. We're a popular office with the legislature, they like to tinker in what we do every session, and so we're just always ready to make changes, but...
Yeah, I've always been interested in the fact that when I get my registration renewal, I pay for an inspection, but then I see itemized on that an inspection fee in addition to that.
You used to pay $15 at the inspection place, and half of it went to the Department of Motor Vehicles. Now, I collect the Department of Motor Vehicles fee.
Okay.
And you only pay for the inspection at the inspection station.
I was, okay.
Yeah. I don't know what those fees are, I, I'm not sure how that's going to work out, so. Anyway, as I said, we're rather busy at the tax office, it's kind of a hopping joint, folks come to see us on a regular basis, and we're thrilled to see them, even though they're not always happy to see us.
That's all right.
But, just wanted to let you know, we're out there, we're kind of out of sight, out of mind, but we're tickled to be in a position to help the people in Brazos County, so, thank you.
One thing, clarification?
Yes.
One thing, this is, okay, even though we collect the money for all of these entities when it comes to property taxes and other fees and things, the county does not get, even though it says Brazos County Tax Assessor/Collector, the county does not get all of the revenue?
No, if you will look at your bill, there are different entities listed on it, and the county's portion is usually the smallest number on there, that's really interesting, unless it's an emergency services district. But yes, we do collect, and interestingly enough, the statute requires that if we provide these services, while we do get some revenue back for that, it can only be the amount that it costs us, so we cannot make money on that.
So we operate at cost?
We operate at cost, absolutely.
That's good. And then, you're bonded as Tax Assessor/Collector, but as I understand it, you are also personally liable? If those collects, those collections are not made?
Those verbiage in, the verbiage in the Constitution, creating the Office of Tax Assessor/Collector provides for personal liability for the money running through the office. So if money goes missing for any reason, and I cannot prove that I was diligent to protect from that, then yes, I'm liable.
I always found that to be an interesting responsibility of your position individually.
You have to be half a bubble off plum to want this job. I'm telling you.
Man, that's a colloquial, I gotta, I gotta, I gotta pull that one into the inventory. Half a bubble off plum.
It's, yeah.
I love it.
It's, interestingly enough, I have a state auditor that's showing up in my office as we speak, for the, for the motor vehicle stuff. I'm audited by everybody and their dog all the time, and he is doing a major review of my office since I am not going to be here next year. So he is doing that audit now, and I am bonded to the state, as well as to the county, I'm also bonded to any taxing unit that I collect for if they choose, but that's their call, and my staff, because of my personal liability, they are bonded, but they're not bonded to the county, they're bonded to me, because it's my liability. So, it's an interesting, it's an interesting office.
Well, with the fact that you are not going to continue to be Brazos County's Tax Assessor/Collector, I just want to take this opportunity to thank you for the presentation, and to thank you for the... you for the many, many years of service that you have provided Brazos County citizens in, in what you have done. Your integrity, your openness, your ability to be of advice and counsel to people whenever they ask has been very remarkable, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Kristi. We are happy that there are a few of y'all that are half a bubble off. I, I know that's limited and I'm-
My parents told me I was special.
They were right.
Is there, just one last question. Is there a way we can, and this is one year look back, is there, is it too much of an issue for us for future planning? And I know for the budget office and looking at things that we could get these same type of numbers on a five-year trend without it being too much of an effort?
I don't know that I can go back in time, but as we go forward, like I said, we are providing these reports to the budget officer on a monthly basis.
Super. Thank you, Nina.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. Next, we've got a presentation discussion by county personnel on the current status of the 101 North Texas Avenue Planning Endeavor and Expo Facility Assessment. And Trevor, I think you're going to do that.
More Judge Commissioners, back again this week for a couple other projects that we've got going. We're going to start with the 101 North Texas Avenue Building, formerly the Bryan ISD Administration Building. As you all are aware, we are set to demo that building in late June, early July, coming up soon. We engaged with Broadus Planning to help us look at that site, about what, what we could do with it for the future of Brazos County. With the, with court's guidance, we looked at the following departments here to put in that building, which was the JP and Constable for Precinct Four, Adult Probation, the future home for the Public Defender's Office, and both the Child Support Court and Child Protection Court. As we worked through the planning process and programming process, we, we did have to pull off the Child Support and Child Protection Court due to the inmate movement infrastructure that was going to have to go into that space. So, we, we are no longer putting them over there, it'll just be the top four departments on that list. We did meet with all of the departments and worked through all of their programming needs, both for their current needs and into the future as we look forward. That roughly came out to a sixty-two thousand square foot building across three, three stories. That includes all of their space needs as well as the circulation, mechanical IT needs, public restrooms, that kind of stuff to support the, to support the spaces. Due to the number of employees in those departments, we are going to, planning on putting a parking structure on that site. If you'll remember, we lost the crosswalk at 26th Street between the courthouse and our parking garage, so to make it safer for our employees, we're going to put a parking structure on the site for them. We also looked at putting a sky bridge to connect this building to the courthouse. We met with TechDOT and went over a couple options that we have, and they're super excited about a, about a sky bridge between those two buildings. There's a lot of cross-traffic between the departments that are going over there and the operations that are happening in the courthouse. So, again, much safer for our people to be able to cross that way than either, than at either intersection at street level. All of that adds up to a sixty-one million dollar estimate for the building, the parking structure, and the bridge on that site. And I've got, just for reference, I know everyone knows which building we're talking about, but it's the building here on the corner of Texas and WJB. And then, we've got kind of a rendering from the civil folks that are subcontracted by Broadus. You can see there the existing courthouse, the proposed building, the parking garage, as well as the proposed pedestrian bridge to connect the two. Any questions on this one? I'm sure there are.
I've been kind of keeping up with the way things are going, so I really don't have any questions unless somebody else does.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, being new and unique structure if we have a bridge over, I mean, kind of that, hey, pinch me, am I really in Brazos County type of thing. I know if you get down Central Business District, larger metropolitan areas, that, that is there. And so, we really intend that looking at the, who's going to be in that building, that there's going to be a need for a lot of safe pedestrian passage between the two buildings.
Correct.
Okay. And then, the other question I had was, is I'd inquired with, I think, Bruce Arret and I, and we talked about the property that's to the east on William Joel Bryan Parkway that is historical site.
It is.
But, that it, if I remember looking through the BCAD, that that was conveyed to the city of Bryan, and then the city of Bryan conveyed that back to the original donor of the property itself. And has there been any further exploration on? Because that piece of property's highest value is probably beyond what exists there and I think would be extremely attractive to Brazos County. Has there been any further research into that to see, I mean, a, a potential offer to move those structures out to a county-owned property that has historical significance out in Boonville? And I don't want to let any cats out of bags or anything like that if this is something that should be discussed in executive session, but I do think that that's something that we need to think about for the future.
As far as I know, we've not engaged with the landowners, but we can definitely look at that moving forward.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Any other questions on this property? No, we're-
Thank you, Trevor.
Absolutely. We'll move on. So, as you may remember, we, it's probably been a couple months, but we, we engaged in a contract with an architect to do a facilities assessment for us out at the Expo Complex. It's, that place was built in 2007, and so, we're coming up on, you know, that fifteen, twenty-year mark for, for the original phase of construction out there on the site. They brought their architecture and engineering team in, looked at the civil structural MEP, kitchen equipment and technology out there. And I just want to run through a brief synopsis of what our initial results of that study looked, looked at. Again, they opened in 2007 with, then that was originally the exhibit hall that we've got out there, the north arena and one of the barns. And then, there've been two expansions since then, and we looked at the entire facility, all the buildings on the site. They were able to identify several problems, some site and civil issues, which I'll show you some pictures of, some roof problems, plumbing, HVAC, some architectural issues, and then some concrete issues on the interior slabs. We did get a rough estimate of repairs for everything that they classified as a priority one problem, and that number was right at ten million dollars. That did not include any, any replacement roof work, which we'll have an incoming estimate here in the next couple of weeks for. You're going to see a series of pictures here now that kind of show a lot of what we, what we've seen out there. This is Leonard Road out on the front of the property, and this is the, the curb stop on the, would be the most northernmost parking lot. We've, this is all starting to erode, and our curb has kind of started to fall off. And so, one of, this was one of their big items on the site work was to come in, shore that up, potentially with a retaining wall to support that parking lot to keep it from falling off any further. There's a mow strip along the base of the fence surrounding the entire property, and you can see where that concrete shifted and started to heave, and that was another one of their, their larger items that showed up on there. Another piece of the parking lot, this is on the Jones roadside off of Leonard Road, and we've just had lots of erosion happening off of this berm here off the parking lot. Not only is it, you know, it's bad for the trees, it's bad for the asphalt, it's just bad altogether. And so, they, they propose going in and shoring that up. Switch over to the roof. We had an original roof on the exhibit hall, which was an exposed fastener roof, which over time, the, you know, the, the washers and grommets on all those screws will eventually, the, the UV rays and the heat and everything that they get, they eventually just erode, fall off, whatever it might be, which causes roof leaks, and there's a lot of that in these pictures also. And so, they proposed going back in with a standing seam roof without exposed fasteners to protect us into the future. A lot of our sealants are gone, again, the heat, the UV. To go along with the building envelope problems, we've had some birds obviously get into the building and giving the folks out there trouble wherever they can get in. You can see this from, this is above ceiling and the plenum space, but you can see natural light and everything getting in, and it's not just the one space, it's, there's several Threw this in there just to show y'all, one of the big items that they brought up was the high water pressure into the building. So, they, one of their recommendations was to bring in a pressure-reducing device on every building that we've got out there to extend the life of the plumbing in the building. The high water pressure can cause all kinds of issues, and you'll kind of see what some of the result of that is in some of the next pictures. The picture here shows the main shut-off valve for the water line coming into the, to the exhibit hall. Ernest's guys are actually out there this week repairing a leak that we've got above the, above a set of the restrooms. And part of the problem is, is there are no isolation valves or anything in all of this interior plumbing, so to do any kind of repairs, they've got to shut off water to the entire building. So, part of, again, one of the, one of the recommendations from VOK was to go in, replace a lot of that plumbing, plumbing, rehang it, support it better, and then also add some isolation valves so that they can service the fixtures. Here's some of that overhead plumbing that we're talking about. This is all running through the ceiling space, plenum space above. You can see, here's a, here's a plumbing hanger that fell, and over time, the water hammer issue we've got out there, anytime any of those quick-close valves, the plumbing just shakes, it's, you can see this all threads kind of starting to saw a hole through this hard ceiling. You can see some of the corrosion happening here, and again, a lot of this is, you know, pinhole leaks that start, and then just start to do damage to all of our joints throughout the building. Kind of more of that, just more examples of, of the plumbing issues. We've got some HVAC issues out there also. They recommend replacing a lot of the original air handlers that, that were part of the original build. It, you know, these things age over time, and it's just, you know, it's deferred maintenance and something we've got to look at, look at fixing. The chiller pipe was another big one. Ernest requested this in, in Capitol, and it also popped up on their list as a big-ticket item to basically go in and replace all of the chiller pipe running through the building. The insulation comes off, starts to sweat, and then it just steamrolls from there. There's fifty or so of these pictures I could show you, but I just grabbed a couple. More of the same. This picture and the subsequent next picture is an, is an item that came up. So, these electrical panels, this is a transfer switch for the generator that we've got out there that, that is connected to the emergency panels for the interior of the building. And while that doesn't seem all that exciting, the only way to get to these, these panels is through this door up here. There are three or four of these doors throughout the exhibit hall to get to the mechan, the mechanical mezzanine to either service the HVAC units or also deal with any issues that we might have up there. And so, that was another big one that came up on their list. Right now, they've got a scissor lift out there that you, you go up, you open the door, and you pray as you step out that you don't fall off and, and get into that space. So, one of the, one of the things that, that they recommended was to either go in with a ship's ladder or a set of stairs, somehow modify it where it's a lot easier to get up there and safer, obviously, for all our folks. I think this is the last one that I've got because we, when we reviewed it with them, we only got through the, the exhibit hall and the ballroom space, and we actually have another meeting coming up in the next, next few days or, or week to look at the rest of the spaces. So, this is the concrete floor inside the exhibit hall. When we opened, when we opened the exhibit hall up and opened the expo up, there was a white epoxy floor in the exhibit hall, and roughly about, I think, three to four years after the place opened, we hired a contractor to come in and grind it down, diamond-grind that concrete to a much easier-to-maintain finish and more aesthetically pleasing. The result of that, though, is that you see all of these, all of these cracks, spider cracks, and pits and divots throughout the floor. And so, one of their items was come in, fill the patches, or patch it, fill all the cracks, and then go back and reseal that concrete. As far as we knew, it hadn't been done since the floor was ground down, which again was 2010, 2010, 2011. And there's just more examples of the same. This, these pictures just show some of the shifting and things that we've got happening out there. Everybody probably sees this in their house, you know? It's just the nature of where we live, where we build, but we're fighting it too in, in all of our buildings also. So, yeah, so that's Expo. And again, that's just the exhibit hall, ballroom, and site work. We'll have some more, more to show once we get through the outdoor buildings and things. I know we've got some bigger items out there that need to be remediated also. Any questions?
I mean, it's pretty clear that we've got things that need to be addressed out there, and it's, you know, it's a county asset, it's, it's a popular place to be, they stay busy all the time, and, and I know it's been sometimes hard to do a lot of maintenance because they've got things booked all the time, so you have to work around all that.
Absolutely.
But, I mean, there's, there's, there's clear areas that need to be addressed, and I think we need to be moving forward to trying to get those things bid out and work it in the schedule and see if we can't get them fixed.
Number one, the two presentations today, thank you that they're on the agenda. These are great things. I think they keep our citizens more engaged and involved in understanding what we're doing and, more importantly than that, why we're doing these things. And I really appreciate that from both the Tax Assessor's Office and from the project updates that we've had, the project updates that we had on ARPA projects and those types of things. I think that this is very, very important, not just for us, but I think for the community at large. So, thank you for taking the time and preparing this.
Absolutely.
What, what other properties? Because I've, I've had some conversations with the budget officer and what we need to do on a, does it make sense on a proactive basis for us to be better fiscal managers if we have a ongoing appropriation, say, to deferred maintenance issues? Because I, the one thing I do know about facilities management, and I have no professional training, but from College Station ISD and from the city of College Station-
So, let me, let me stop you, Commissioner. This is really, this is a presentation about what's going on, and I look at it, those are, the questions that I think you're fixing to ask are more budget and how we deal with that, and I'm sure that'll all be coming up a little later, but it's, the way it's-
I assumed that takeaways on the agenda assumed what this means to us and what we need to be focusing on, but if you would prefer not to have that conversation, then I will yield to your discretion.
Well, I mean, it's obvious-
The one thing I do want to ask about-
It is obvious that we're going to need to be addressing them, but how we address them is for a different discussion.
All right. And I, I thought it was appropriate on the agenda, so, but I defer to your judgment.
Okay.
And we'll save those for a more appropriate time in your estimation.
Okay.
If that's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah. So, next steps.
So, the next steps are, is, it's sort of open-ended, we've discussed it a little bit internally, but I, I think one of the things we're going to see is, you know, the expo is built kind of around the same time as the jail, the sheriff's office. I mean, we, we had a lot of buildings that, that went in at about that same time, and I think you're going to see, you know, we could do this in several buildings and come away with a lot of the same, same type of issues. And I think that's the path that we're likely going to take is to kind of continue to dig through these items and get them, get them fixed.
Yeah, those, those are the things that we've talked about. As we look at each building and as we look through, then we kind of figure out, you know, here's the things that need to happen, and then we'll- to happen, and then we'll know kinda where we're at and how we're gonna have to deal with it at budget time.
Absolutely.
All right.
I have no further comment or question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Trevor.
Yep.
Thank you for the presentation. So, we will move on to number five. Approval correct- to correct order 24-005 to order 24-007 for emergency amendment to the Brazos County adopted budget fiscal year 2024, which was approved by the Commissioners Court on April 30, 2024. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second, and I think this was just a number that needed to be changed. That's my understanding, is it just had the wrong number on there, and all we're doing is just correcting the number. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number six is approval of the following Jod discussions.
Move for approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made second to approve A and B discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number seven is request authorization to wire transfer up to $4,074.87 to HHSC for the federal fiscal year 2019, additional graduate medical education program, GME, payment for the benefit of participating hospitals using funding from the Brazos County Local Provider Participation Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number eight is consider and take action on Wixon Creek SUD utility permit to construct road board at 6222 steep hollow circle to provide water services sites located precinct two.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number nine is approval of Treasury Report for February 2024.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 10 is Commissioners Court Minutes for the following dates.
Move for approval A through E?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 11 is budget amendments, budget amendments FYI 23/24, budget amendments 30.01 through 30.07.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion.
Yes, sir. Budget Amendment 30.01. It is, I just wanted a clarification on that, and I visited with our auditor earlier on this, but as I understand this, we have $824,000 more revenue than was actually budgeted? And our general fund is a result- that's what this amendment reflects?
Yes.
Okay. So, that's good. It's always good to have- it's always good to have more money than not have enough, right?
Yes.
I think we've got enough. Thanks.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 12, personal change status.
Move for approval A and B?
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. Number 13 is payment of claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number 8202479 through claim number 8202609, and claim number 9201010 through claim number 9201081.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None motion carries. We will skip down to 16, which is acknowledgment of the FY 2023/24 budget to act on by fund as of May 1, 2024, and an acknowledgment of the FY 23/24 contingency budget to act on by fund as of May 1, 2024. 17 is Juvenile Director's Report on Detention Population. Lynda.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We have 41 in detention, 29 males, 12 females, and we have 44 on electronic monitor.
Thank you, Lynda. 18 is Sheriff's Report on Inmate Population.
Good morning again. 822 today, 698 men, 124 women, 38 on monitors.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Next is Announcement of Interest Items and Possible Future Agenda Topics.
Jod, I'd like to take this opportunity. I see he's not here, but this, I believe, is the last week that Fred Payne will be with us, and I wanted to take this opportunity. I can't hear you.
Is he gonna be here till the end of May?
Okay. Well, he'll be here till the end of the May. I thought that May 8th was his last day, and he was taking vacation and all that good stuff.
Was that last week he called?
Good. Thank you, because I would prefer for him to be there, because I wanted to extend a extreme thank you to him for the service that he has provided me as Precinct One Commissioner, and I think to the entire county. As engineer, he will be missed, and I wanted to publicly thank him for that service, 'cause he's- he's done a great job. I hope we will be rapidly successful in finding a successor for that position, and, you know, the modification of the road and bridge position to be project manager with- that we can fill that spot as well, so they don't get too overwhelmed. But I really wanted to just thank Fred for doing what I feel like was a fantastic job for us. And in light of future agenda items, in light of the rainfall that we've had, in light of the issues that we have with roadways and those types of things, I think it's appropriate. I've talked about it in the past, but I wanted to make it public that we- I believe that we need to take the lead in exploring the creation of a Brazos County Drainage District. And the basis of that is what I've heard from our emergency management people and other folks, our law enforcement-